Mr. Mayor and Council, just to continue with a police update. It goes without saying that Minnesota law enforcement across the spectrum has been busy this past couple of days. I started out with the light news and something to celebrate. This is a little bit heavier, but I thought going into this past weekend, our local focus is going to be the No Kings demonstration. Whenever, you know, we talk about a lot of people showing up in our city, it's of public safety interest. But early Saturday morning, and I woke up to learn that there would be much more involved than just that. With the unthinkable shooting of a state senator and his wife in Champlin to the murder of another and her husband in Brooklyn Park, all law enforcement divisions and tools across the state of Minnesota were stood up. Our Anoka County SWAT team was activated and assisted in the immediate search for the suspect, several of our Anoka officers being part of that team down in the Brooklyn Park area. Our involvement included dignitary details that were kept staffed until last night when the suspect was taken into custody.
Been a really hard week.
Thank you very much for that update. Council questions, I know we also have Senator Abler here, I know he wanted to speak maybe before we move off of the topic of the big elephant in the room. Is there anything else you have for the chief? Senator Abler, if you want to come forward and speak, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. It's been a really hard weekend. And I'll probably get through it okay, I don't know, I've had different moments and it's, as you think about this, we're not accustomed to having regular officials being shot. We worry about the president and high ranking people and you just never think about it. In our political discussions, you have rallies on Main Street and No Kings and we have rallies at the Capitol for every possible reason, people that are upset or not, and they go and they know usually anything happens and suddenly, I just, in the beginning and middle to end, I'm going to commend our local police, they were just phenomenal. On this topic, I was awakened at 3:00 AM by two officers who interrupted my sleep. Anyway, groggy and whatever, just please, okay, so, and I'm naive, I would have opened the door for frankly, anybody, because I'm a neighbor in need, you know, it's our little neighborhood, it's not that dramatic and anyways, I opened the door and there's two officers and in my pajamas and if I was John Hoffman, I would have got shot. And I have to suddenly think differently about that. And so there was a sergeant officer and they had two on duty and they decided they were going to camp out and make sure that I was safe and my family, which was curious but appreciated, given like what? And so they described a little detail and I figured out it was John Hoffman and one of the two women's in their household, because nothing was known hardly yet. And they said, you know, if anybody comes to the door, call 911 and make sure they're legit. And so they came back at 3:30 and they're like, I don't know, maybe it's not legit, so we called 911 and they were legit. I mean, it's just really weird to screen the police, like I just had never thought. And they updated us on Melissa's situation and they didn't know who it was, but I figured it'd probably be her since it was a Brooklyn Park legislator. And then they said hello again at I think 6:00 with the changing of the shift and people were texting and calling at all hours. It was the most incredible horrible night. But I, as an administrator policymaker, it's really good to see when staff is allowed to take initiative. And you have a police force that has over the years, with the help of the, you were probably a part of that and just in building it and now you're the head of it, where the officers, just, I'll speak to officers, can like think of good ideas to do and they decided that one of them was going to stay there without having to check with the home office. And that was just extremely admirable. And giving out certificates, I didn't bring one, but they were the first force online protecting somebody in this situation. And that was just makes me prouder than ever to live here and be representing Anoka, you know, in St. Paul. So the last I heard, and so I spent last Saturday, heard that Melissa had passed away and her husband and that was horrible, I have known her for a long time, in fact, I, when she first came to the legislature, I happened to be in the House chamber in November for some purpose and she wanders in with her two kids and looking around like a tourist and I showed her the retiring room and you probably sit over there and took a picture probably with her. And, "Dear Melissa, oh, nice to meet you." And so got to know her over the years and, you know, she was definitely a woman who stood up for what she believed and kept her word even to the very last, when she took a vote that pained here to no end. And just to comment about that, if you watch her interview on this undocumented immigrant thing, which is controversial to say the least, she did not believe it was a good idea at all. And it was horrible politics for her, because she might have wanted to be something else or whatever. And so some people watched her and they thought that she was afraid and I really would say that she was just grieving the fact that she had a lead and at the end, leaders lead. And I believe this has nothing, I don't know why they, she was chosen, but I just, I don't think she had a premonition about it, but it just, it's tough to be a leader. And there are times when five of you have to do something that you know you dislike doing, reducing a program, buying something instead of what you want, changing something, laying off somebody, the police and staff and have to make decisions that they really hate, but they know it's the right decision. And these days seldom are people so admirable and to go against their policy view and even their politics to do what they had to do to get, to keep their word that she had been a part of doing before, so I cannot commend her enough. Senator Hoffman, I expected her to be really transparent, I spent most of Saturday thinking that he was going to die. And I've known him for 20 years or better and his wife and he took nine bullets and she took eight and she stepped in front of her daughter who had none. And again, what you, you think you might do under pressure and, you know, Chief Yonkis knows much more about pressure and being in places like with life and death than I ever will, but what would you do? You think, well, that's what I would do. But then if I did, and so we heard yesterday that John had had two surgeries and that had gone well and that was the third one. And just to be direct, we haven't heard anything in 24 hours, so just pray for him. And he's the kind of guy who, if he could, he would adopt Anoka. I think, and with all respect to Champlin, you really can't blame him, I guess about that, but, but I mean, he loved Champlin well, he got the Mill Pond and he was, he wanted to carry the bill before for the dam, it's like, it's my dam, but go ahead, you can, you can be the chief author. And, and he was in the majority at the time, so I thought that was just a great idea and so I piled on and he got some planning money and, and just if there's anything that needed to be co-authored Highway 10 or anything, we mixed and matched who was the chief authors, you couldn't tell. And we tried to work beyond politics in our work and I'm trying to talk in the present tense because I'm hoping to, you know, tell him he's not funny in one of our meetings. My wife says I'm not funny, well, you're not. That was funny, that was just our little joke that we would have and that we have, excuse me, present tense. And so I don't know about gunshots, but I know nine is a lot and so if people would simply pray. And I think if he, when he comes out of this, we're all going to owe a great gratitude to the Lord for his miraculous intervention, to this also great member of the legislature who has, most ordinarily puts politics aside and works with whoever needs work and in his own personal life, his commitment to people with disabilities and children of special needs, IEPs and education and the frail elderly and people that have a weak voice or no voice, that he becomes their righteous indignation on so many occasions. And he just, I just pray that he's okay. So that's the latest and it's just after the first visit by your officers, we're laying in bed and praying and I didn't know how bad this was going to go. I don't think about my, you know, mortality, but at those times you kind of do and I just prayed with her and I said, well, if this is my last day, then it's been, I thank the Lord for his goodness to me and the opportunities that I've had to live and serve and enjoy all the freedoms that we have and everything, it was, it was a moment. And so I just, I'm no preacher, but I just, it's always good to keep in mind our mortality and keep short accounts and remember there's a, there's a Lord God Almighty up there who's going to be, you know, noticing us when we take our last breath here, which you think it's, you got 10 years, we're hoping to get a house in Florida and go there in the winter, who knows what five seconds will hold. So anyway, that's what I got to say about Senator Hoffman and Representative Hortman.
Thank you very much, Senator. Council. Yeah, Councilmember Rosted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Senator Abler, thank you for being here today and one of the things, of many things that comes out when you are talking about your colleagues in the House and Senate, I look back to my time teaching and I so appreciated having you as a person to show kids what it meant to work across the aisle. You have a long history of reaching out and connecting with people who you think would be adversaries, but you're not. And that's something that I hope that politics can aspire to be more so of, working across the aisle, befriending people, finding that common space and thank you for modeling that for so many years for the citizens of Anoka.
Thank you very much.
Well, I, I wrote something. I want to go off the cuff sometimes, but I felt like I wanted to write something, so I'm going to, I'm going to kind of read this as I'm going through. I, first of all, I did, I knew you were going to be here and I just want to echo the comments Senator Abler had mentioned about the responsiveness and the dedication of our police department and all the other police departments around here this weekend, as well as the SWAT that they were involved with. There was a lot of activity, as was stated before, the terrible events of the weekend occurred in our neighboring communities. And I know our staff put in a lot of long hours, they spent a lot of time away from their families, slept in the fire department, as you mentioned, you know, and spent Father's Day away from some people here. So thank you for stepping up and for all of them being very vigilant, as was described by yourself to me today and as well by Senator Abler. So I just want to start with that, thank you. Also, I just want to touch on the victims of the terrible crimes. You know, I think most of us elected officials in the area know that we need to bond together to get things done, because our corner of the metro sometimes doesn't have as much pull or as much resources or as much other things to get some things that we've needed that have been unaddressed for a very long time. And too often, we hear these things that are, you know, politicians, whether it's partisan or not, are portrayed pretty negative terms, in person, in media, online, posts, all sorts of things. But my experience for all of this, you know, it's not nearly as, as depth as Councilmember Weaver's or Senator Abler's here, but a lot of the people around here just understand that a rising tide raises all ships. You know, you get behind and you have these conversations with folks and they just want to do what's right for this area and for the people here and they're really willing to work together. So Senator John Hoffman and Representative Melissa Hortman are two people that I've really had the pleasure of interacting with more and more over the last few years. Each has their own unique style as well, but whenever the subject of Anoka came up with either of them or the city made an ask, even though they represented neighboring communities, they didn't start out by saying no because whatever. It was always yes and how can we get that to happen? Whether it was highway or trail money, as was mentioned, the Rum River Dam project we've had, or other policy changes like social district or some of the housing regulations that were going to be happening that would have impacted our ability to do positive things in our community, they were supportive of some of those goals and for those of the greater region. A lot of people thought in regional terms and there are two that do that all the time. So I just, I think I speak for all of us on, up here, we're really incredibly saddened and shaken by the violence that was enacted on our neighbors and our friends. We all sign up to do a job because we want to benefit the city, our county, our school district, the state, the country, whatever role you have, and nobody should have to consider a threat to their lives or the lives of their family just for stepping up and doing their civic role where they're carrying the wishes of the people forward. That's just, it's something, as was stated, you don't think about at this level, but it happens now. We always want to be open, we want to be accessible, we want to be integrated in the communities we serve, but the events of this last weekend really make people question how open you can be. How, you know, should I step up and put myself out there, is my family going to be safe? We all need to do the best thing we can, I think, to humanize each other. We need to listen to each other, we need to understand each other, even if we don't agree, and we need to avoid nasty comments and inflammatory words and rhetoric as much as we can that just raise the temperature and create this us versus them narrative. Because in my experience, this is not how this works most times. Representative Hortman, there was a quote I saw from her and I couldn't find it again, but she understood that conflict and disagreement was really part of the job, that's why we're here, you're not all going to have the same ideas and that's the point. But in a representative democracy, as long as you can do it, you can do it with some humility and maybe a little humor, can help get you through the situation and the issue and move on to the next one. One thing I've taken out of this tragedy is that as elected officials, we just, we need to do a better job highlighting the many more times we work together than we're divided. I also want to ask members of the public that dedicate a lot of time, we have some folks here today, we have a lot out there, dedicate time paying attention, interacting with the city to also continue to carry that, that narrative forward and to show the good and the positive things we do and not just focus on, on negative things or infighting that may happen on occasion. So thanks to those that put their time serving in all capacities, staff, officers, legislators, council members, soil and water board members, park and rec people, I mean, anybody on a board or commission, appreciate that. And maybe more importantly, I want to say thank you to the families of those that serve, because often they bear the burden of those jobs that we have quietly and as we've seen this weekend, sometimes at very great cost. So thank you to everybody that serves and I hope we can all take something positive out of these terrible events. Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, it's not really sunken in my head yet, it just doesn't seem real and it's hard to fathom what really happened. I've had the honor and the pleasure to work both with Representative Hortman and Senator Hoffman on MRCCA rules and probably when we were trying to save the dam at Coon Rapids, when that was under the discussion and the flying fish saved the day. But she was very instrumental and she was, you know, yes, she represented not Anoka, but she understood the values that that body of water means to everybody that's in this regional area. Same with Senator Hoffman and when we were talking MRCCA rules, he was out on our pontoon and we're looking at all these different areas in Champlin where there was erosion or people had armored their banks. He really likes Anoka, you're absolutely correct. He would, he thinks, he'd be good on this side of the river too, just like the chief. But no, he's, he's a wonderful person and Melissa's going to be dearly missed and I look forward to having John back in the seat and carrying those bills that you two can gang up on and get things done and accomplished in the Senate.
Thank you. Councilstaff, any further? Councilmember Scott.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And this is kind of expounding, you had mentioned about thanking the families as well. I think those are some of the unsung heroes in some of this. You had mentioned before Senator Abler about Yvette and what would you do in this situation? And she, you know, unsung hero, you know, the spouse of the senator, put herself in front of her daughter and then her daughter was able to escape and getting any bullet wounds and then she saved her parents by being able to call the police, by being alive to being able to call the police. And then outside of that, we had the Sergeant Riley Nordan, who had the foresight to think, okay, we have a shooting here, there's someone who lives a couple miles away, the Hortmans, and let's go over there and check, take a look at what's going on over there. So there's a lot of unsung heroes in this as well, out of this tragedy. And I think our hearts definitely go out to all the victims as well, but we should definitely look at some of the heroes in this case as, that we've been able to see come out of some of the stories. So thank you very much.
Good, good point. So, Council, anything further related to this topic or, or police activity update?
Mr. Mayor, if the place is done, I'll just talk about the dam for a second, do you want to?
Sure, we'll get a legislative update here.
Okay, just took my five minutes already.
Okay, you're fine.
We're all on borrowed time. Anyway, yeah, I'm, it's, it's just been a real long couple of days and if you talk to any of the legislators, they're kind of shocked and I think many of you just, in every elected role, it's like, no, what does that mean? So it means we all, like I think your comments were perfect, I won't improve upon them, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, so the Anoka Dam, Representative Stevenson, it's really good to have a representative who is the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, kind of good to have around. You know, and you, they say friends come and go, enemies accumulate, Representative Stevenson thought it would be a valuable idea to take away $92 million from the counties with the sales tax, which if Senator Hoffman were here, he would light the ceiling on fire with his displeasure with that. He just went on and on about it and he was part of what helped to undo that. They took half of the sales tax money, actually, yeah, they took half. Anoka got 12 million and they were going to take six and buy bus ways with it. And so that was highly controversial, happened with no public process and that was in the transportation bill and so that was derailed in the parlance of the transportation bill through much fewer. But as a secondary thing, and I'll give him the primary credit, I was the author of the bill for the Anoka Dam, but the person, so, so then the county still had money left from that sales tax and Zach says, hey, let's put that money toward the pedestrian bridge or whatever part of the dam, 6.2 million. And that's actually what came to be and in my conversations with the county commissioners, they really wanted the transportation bill to pass. And even with that 6.2 million in there for their, the one time, kind of a, what do you use the term, internal borrowing? Yeah, so anyway, just an intra-county transfer. Anyway, then it'll blink back on. So that's the law and the money is in some bucket somewhere to be used. And in addition, there's $1,000 more in the environment bill, which I voted for that as well. And it's just sometimes I wind up being the 35th vote out of that, but I think it's also good to lead and take the heat that you do. But I, those are important to the city and I represent you all and it seems like the right thing to do and so I'm pretty happy about that. There were other topics that were broached about pretty well allowing anybody to put a threeplex wherever they wanted with no parking, with whatever amenities they might want. I did have to apologize to the vinyl siding people, I was dismissive of beige vinyl siding on a threeplex jammed into a neighborhood on a small lot with no parking. And so I, I didn't have to, but I thought it'd be appropriate because I was pretty outspoken, like what are you thinking? Especially in some of our older neighborhoods, yeah, let's just drop it. I mean, even no parking minimums, like what? And I had also apologized to people enjoy, I used the word postage stamp. And so I said, some people really enjoy a small lot with vinyl siding on their home. Anyway, so it was, maybe it was a little tongue in cheek, but none of that came to pass, best I know. It got stuck in the state government committee and I think failed on a four to six vote. So you might want to follow up with that to the planning people and just keep that. I was surprised, it seemed the fix was in and I thought something was going to happen for sure and I don't know if anything passed much on that topic, but nothing hurtful to you and, you know, they were talking about historic districts and all that and the price of housing is high, yes, but there was no assurance if you put up a little minimal standard home on an odd sized lot that they're going to lower the price. And so anyway, that, that went away and so we were in communication with the staff at various points along that. And that's most of the things that are, were coming up and so if you have any questions, I'll stand for those and otherwise you have a fair amount of business to go with. So all in all, for the, the big deficit, you know, you got some dam money and, and then as you drive the rest, you're a little short of the surfing part, but I think in terms of, what do you need, 13 million or something to get the main work done and, you know, that seems practical. At some point, you will all decide what you want to try to do, we trust you to be leaders and, and that, so anyway, that's what I got.
Thank you very much for the update. I will say just I do appreciate, I know we, there was, we had a lot of asks this year with various things and I think Anoka came out in very, very good position related to, as I said, policy, financials, related to some of these things. So as was stated before, I think for the most part, all of our, our official senator and representative were on the same page for all the things that benefited us as well as many of our surrounding ones as well. So thank you for the coalition that you and Representative Stevenson and some of the others have put together and held together. I always like to say, Anoka's, we punch above our weight quite well, I feel like, but it's been helpful lately to have such, such great legislators that are trying to help us out and be impactful and effective. So thank you for that. I know every legislative session's a year at a time, but so far, so good.
I neglected one thing, the Miller Building is going to be replaced with a bright shiny building that's a 50-bed unit up there under the auspice of AMRTC, I presume you're okay with that. We really need the beds to get people out of jail under the 48-hour rule, a good number. A significant percentage, just to guess, at least 30% don't belong in jail, they belong under some other place. The law is within 48 hours, which is impossible. It was very controversial at the end and actually Senator Hoffman and I put together, I won't call it a stunt, but I'll just, if you want to hear the shortest version, so it's a really, it's a big thing and we've been discussing it. Keith Ellison came to us wanting to change the law to make it on beds available because he was frankly tired of being sued, like not a good reason to pass a law, maybe fix the reason for being sued, to look after the welfare of these individuals. And so the sheriffs and the county attorneys had made a big splash about their dissatisfaction and, and they wrote a letter and there was a House member that was trying to find a million dollars or two. And so in contriving with the Human Services Bill, which was, the target wound up being $1 billion, $90 million in reductions, I came up with an amendment called A-19, which is one of Hoffman's favorite songs, A-19. It just, it just keeps flashing back at me. But anyway, and so in that bill, we were able to fully fund the Miller Building at $75 million, kind of, sort of a gold from straw, we contrived some money, but that's a longer story. But anyway, so at the end, our bill, the bonding bill carried $55 million, our bill carried 20 million, then the governor demanded that we find 34 million for operations in the last year. So we had to add 54 million more dollars into our cut bill, the largest cut in the history of time in Human Services and still able to kind of soft land it and John and I worked just like hand and glove on that. The bill is challenging, but no one's going to die and it's, will just put more pressure on the system, but it's welcome to budget deficits. But anyway, so that's in that bill and fully funded, it's going to happen, I think by '28 or '29, it's going to be operational. So that'll be a very good thing and, and so for the city, there's jobs going to come there, good paying, solid jobs with benefits and opportunities for people living here and all that. So however much $34 million a year pays for operations, probably 25 of that is staff and so it's got to be a couple hundred jobs. So how about that? Anyway, and that's another Hoffman me thing, so it's kind of cool. Anyway, I've gone on long enough, but thank you very much.
Sure, I appreciate you bringing that up. So Council, any comments or questions for Senator Abler?
Miller Building has a lot of history, but going way back to when swim practice was held there every day, early.
I remember it. Really warm water.
Very chlorinated also.
Yeah, Peter Jawinski.
With unusual guests.
Yeah, they would peer at us, I remember. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for your leadership, thank you to our staff. I don't think there's a finer crew anywhere, so that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just thank you for adding the part about the Miller Building, just so people understand, there's two Miller Buildings. This is the state Miller Building, not the old ThermoServe Lakeland Pool Miller Building.
Oh, yeah.
Right, I know, I stumbled upon that six months ago, I'm like, oh, that's right, I forgot about that. But just a quick question, is that basically an expansion of the Anoka Metro Regional Treatment Center?
Yes.
For the most part, just more mental health beds and more, more spaces for folks?
Right, I was hoping it could be reused because I'm also from Anoka and I'm kind of frugal. So I toured there and I realized that was a lost cause. So they're going to tear down, actually the pool already is, it's a cement pool, so don't be diving into it.
No, I cracked my head.
But there's all, all the old, all the old windows are there, I mean, it's like a history of time. But they're going to demo the old- a history of time. But they're going to demo the old building, which is right across from Stepping Stone. And then that'll be also a secure facility connected by a walkway and it's going to be part of that whole state project. And I think it's, reusing the land there is a really good idea. And I'm just really pleased we're able to pull that off. So Brad Johnson is happy too, as a county attorney. So.
Thank you for that. I know that is something that, you know, in Anoka and in so many places, we struggle with mental health issues and people that aren't in the right places for where they needed to be. And so I appreciate you doing that. And we know it's obviously an expansion of that, but it's, it's needed. It's something communities are suffering with, with our jail discussions and hospitals being full and people on the streets. And so it's glad to see the state's a little bit reversing course from the direction it had gone so many years ago.
Yeah.
Counsel, anything further?
I just wanted to mention that staff has been working with the architect group, working on the Miller, the design of the building. And that will be coming before counsel. I don't have a tentative date, but it will be coming before you for site plan review. And yeah, we'll definitely a site plan review. They might be requesting a rezoning to the Human Services District that's residentially zoned up there. So don't worry, it'll come before you guys for a full consideration.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you very much.
Couldn't be happier. Thank you. Thank you so much.